All right, it is six o'clock. We will go ahead and proceed with our meetings tonight. So I will make a motion to open our meeting for July 8th, 2015. We have a few things on our agenda tonight. And we will start off the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So Mr. Tanner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Absolutely.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
We will approve some minutes from previous commissions in our next one. They were not on our agenda for tonight, so we will agenda them for next time. So tonight, we will proceed with our agenda. I'd like to first notice that tonight there was a notice for a Title 15 amendment change put out for the public. The Title 15 amendment change was put out in error, and because it was not properly put on our agenda, then we will still address some of the concerns that were on it as a kind of a working group amongst each other and discuss it. But because it's not on our agenda, after our discussion, we will move to continue it so it's properly noticed and properly on the agenda. So we can't action it because it wasn't on the agenda. Okay? So we will discuss it. And so is that worded correctly, Dave? Good? We can discuss it, we just can't action it without it being on the agenda, correct?
Um, yeah, I can go through. That'd be fine.
Okay. Yep. So, like now, I'd like to invite from the staff, Mr. Anderson, to come up and discuss what the DRC would like for us to consider for a Title 15 amendment. Again, it was noticed, but we will continue it because it wasn't properly annotated on the agenda.
Thank you. So the actual proposal that we're talking about here is a map amendment. The applicant applied a few weeks ago to change the zoning map for property that's located right here. This is Interstate 15. This is a storage unit development, Staker Parsons, the Ford dealership. Everybody have a pretty good feel for where we're talking about. Right now, the property is zoned I-1. The applicant applied to have the zoning changed to I-2 because we don't allow storage units to be constructed now in the I-1 zone. We did up until eight or nine years ago, up until right after this project was built, in fact, or approved. But since then, they've only been allowed in the I-2 zone. So the applicant, as I understand it, would like to have the zoning changed so that storage units could be constructed here, hence what we're talking about tonight with the map amendment. So that's the proposal, and the DRC reviewed it. They recommended that rather than to change the map to I-2, and I wasn't in the meeting, so I'm speaking for other people, rather than to do that because of concerns about some of the other things that are allowed in the I-2 zone, not wanting to see that zone expand in this part of the city, they recommended ultimately that the zoning remain I-1, and that instead we change the text of the I-1 zone to allow storage units back in the I-1 zone. So that's the recommendation that comes before you tonight. We have scheduled a public hearing. We've noticed everything that's needed to talk about the map amendment. That's how it's on your agenda. So you have a few different options tonight. You can take action on the map amendment, make a recommendation on that, either to approve or deny. You can continue the map amendment, and you can certainly direct staff to initiate a text amendment. Frankly, I think that's likely going to happen regardless, but I think those are the options that are before you now relative to this request.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Okay. Can we go ahead and look at, pull this same concept up with the current zones for that area, please? I don't see the labeling correctly, but...
It's small. I-1 is here. It's a slightly darker gray here that is I-2.
There's another map that actually shows all of this as I-1 in the whole industrial area. Do you have that?
This is...
This is it?
The gray shade is I-1.
Okay. Looks different than I saw.
So if I, maybe perhaps, to be clear...
All right.
There's your zoning off.
Oh, all right. I just can't see it very well. So one of the things we need to consider, if, that as a group here and part of our discussion, is with the DRC's recommendation to add these storage units to I-2, that potentially anybody in this area could then build storage units. So by leaving I-1 the way it's currently written, and then with the possibility of changing zones, and we can control, I don't know if the word "control" is the right word, but we can then decide on where storage units are potentially being in our area. If an applicant were to submit a request to put in a storage unit in a zone that is already zoned that way, it could potentially go anywhere in this area. Now, I'm not saying that the zoning or the storage units is good or bad in that area. What it does, though, is it limits our ability as planners to look at the future. So skip ahead to another discussion that we need to have as a group tonight, is for the storage unit potential change. You know, we needed to think about the future of the 2700 North on and off ramp that will be coming in the future years, and what we'd like to see as planners in this area. I don't want to get too far ahead in that area because that's a public hearing, and that's another subject on our agenda, but as far as noticing the Title 15 change, is there anybody that would have questions about that before we just move to continue it, since we can't really act on it without it being on the agenda? Is there any further discussions just on adding storage to I-2?
I would like to maybe better understand why the text got changed to not be allowed into I-1, and because that's what we're really proposing, is to bring it back. And so what was the decision? Why was that done? Dave, maybe you could...
It's probably just based in jealousy, being pretty protective of land that we think potentially can support employment, or maybe some types of users that will generate some property tax. That's really what it boils down to. Storage units being a use typically that takes a lot of room and doesn't do either of those two things. And occasionally, you see prime sites for other types of employment-generating types of uses occupied with storage units. And it was really out of that concern, which again, the project on Second East was the impetus for that change. For my property that has visibility on I-15, something a little bit special about that and unique, and having that project built, that was enough to cause us to rethink our zoning arrangement back then.
Dave, maybe you should stay up there, sorry. I've got two questions. The Staker Parsons piece there, where would that qualify? Does it have to be an I-2? Would it be an I-2 still? Or could that whole thing be I-1 if that were to, you know, if that would be appropriate? That's my first question.
To change all of that zoning to I-1, including Staker Parsons, we'd have to either change the I-1 zone to make a concrete batch plant somehow.
So it's currently not allowed in the I-1?
Right. Or we could make it a non-conforming use.
Right.
Which I think probably would be a big red flag for Staker Parsons. So I suspect that would cause them some concern. But those are the two options that we'd have.
Okay. And then, in the notes that, from the DRC meeting, Mr. Thompson, that mentioned he likes, he suggests that storage units be a conditional use in that. I think I like that idea as well. What does that entail in terms of determining? I mean, I'm not sure what conditions should be placed upon it to make it reasonably good for that, you know, protective of the city, but still allowing it to be placed in some places.
A conditional use would allow you to simply require site-specific things at the time that a proposal's presented to mitigate any negative impacts that might be created by ... And all candor, I don't think that negative impacts in an area of the city like what we're talking about really is why storage units should be a concern. You're generally not talking about a lot of noise. Occasionally, do you have some crime-related concerns, but I think those can be addressed pretty effectively other ways. What a conditional use wouldn't do is give the city any discretion as to where a storage unit project might be allowed. It could be sought after and approved at any property that's zoned accordingly, so... Does that help?
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Like I said, this will be put on an agenda for revisiting later time, just knowing that it is coming back on the agenda to possible change. We can reach out at different times for some clarifications or questions.
Brad, maybe I misunderstood, but so is this, is this item something we won't make any decisions on, or is it just the Title 15 amendment that we won't decide on?
Just the Title 15 is what we're going to make decisions on tonight. We can still discuss this as a possible change as well.
Well, I just, I talked to you about this earlier, and I know the parties out here, Travis knows, but, so my title company has, we call it an order, to do title work on this piece, so, you know, potentially I have a conflict in supporting or not supporting. So I won't vote. Our vote's really not binding anyway, so... But I do have some feelings about, just in a general way, about this concept. You know, I think the city's interest here is, they've put it well when we had a meeting a while back, which is, you know, if we had built certain types of things out where Costco is and out where Walmart is, then those things would still be there, and we wouldn't have the revenue-generating type properties. This parcel is, you know, in my mind, not the same type of parcel as some of those others. You know, I'm just, I just encourage the group and the city council to just think about, you know, what's likely to come in here, what will fit in here. I know there's a concern about, you know, the interchange and what might come in in this area, but anyway, this is sandwiched between, this is Smith Auto, right?
Yes.
And then here, so, is this the, don't they say...
Ideal machine, and then cross, I'll forget that.
The trailer?
That's corner B, right?
Yeah.
And that's ideal machine. So, I've had a lot of that property out there for sale for a long time, and now it's moving.
Not moving.
So, there, people aren't flocking to come down to 200 East. Most people don't even drive down that road.
Maybe, maybe, for purposes of our discussion, you know, if this were to become a really lively commercial area, Dave, is there the option of widening the road and all that? I mean, is it all set up so that it can be maybe adjusted to where you could have wider roads, and certain businesses would say, "Well, I could come in here," and it would work well, or, you know what I mean? I'm talking about, you know, could it accommodate all the traffic that might come with some of these other types of businesses versus a storage unit? You see what I'm saying?
You're talking about, like, retail, professional office kind of things?
Yeah, or whatever, you know, some of the stuff that the city might like to see out here. I just, I'm just wondering how reasonable it is to make adjustments here with the existing roads and stuff.
See, I have two different kind of answers to that. First of all, Second East is wide, and we could accommodate a lot of traffic on Second East. Even with just some pretty minor modifications, we could accommodate a lot of traffic. My other thought has to do simply with, I guess I tend to wonder as well what might be appropriate at this location when the interchange is built. What realistically could you expect in five years, 10 years, you know, maybe even, you know, some point in time after that? Obviously, we don't have any interest in seeing the property sit vacant forever. Quite the contrary, we want to see it put to its highest and best use. That's really what you guys meet about every month. And I think we may be well-served to just take a little time out, and we've talked a little bit about the idea of trying to, maybe we solicit some input from other people as to exactly what I think you're asking, what might be viable there, what might be needed to serve different types of uses there, and whether it's not, or excuse me, whether it's reasonable to expect anything other than, you know, light manufacturing and storage unit types of development in the future. You only get one bite at the apple on things like this. At the same time, property owners, you know, they may only have one person come along in a lot of years that's willing to purchase a piece of property, so I understand the...
I guess you all have a chance to explain your foray for that you have. Yeah, we're ready to...
But that's part of the zone change. Let's not jump ahead. Let's stay on the Title 15 part of it right now.
Anyway, I...
Well, that helps out. I appreciate it.
Dave, what does Springville City have planned for the other side? What is its zoning or general planning designation, do you know?
I didn't tell you, but I can try to find out. I'm sure I can find out pretty quickly. Yeah, that's a good question.
Other than they have nothing existing over there. They don't have a batch plant, they don't have a sewer plant.
You're talking about over here, Bruce, or...
Yeah, right there. Well, you know, I think it's a question for the planning commissioners to understand the context of that, of this whole intersection, given the idea that eventually there will be an intersection there, and so based on that intersection, what do we foresee as the future of that intersection on both sides of the piece of the property? And, you know, if there's some connectivity between the two visions for the future there, that needs to be considered as we look at whether or not to amend the text or allow the zone change, whichever one ends up being, so...
Okay, so what I'd like to do is go ahead and make a motion to continue the Title 15 discussion for the map amendment, and then until it's properly put on the agenda.
Why was it not put on the agenda?
Right, the map amendment is on the agenda. That's what we have on the agenda. And there's no need to continue the Title 15 because that wasn't on the agenda.
So we noticed the Title 15 change to I-1, I-2, and that was not, so your zone is on the agenda.
The map amendment is.
Two different things.
But I honestly, I don't think it matters if you continue the text amendment or not. You can just move right into the map amendment if you'd like, I'm sure.
And then we will go ahead and move on to the zone change, which is item number two on our agenda, and this is a public hearing as well. The storage unit zone change is a request from the applicant. So just so we're not confused, the first item of Title 15 was to add storage units to the existing I-2. The next item that we're talking about now is rezoning this to, is Title 2, or excuse me, to I-2, to allow storage units in this area. Okay? So even though it's kind of confusing, they're two separate things. Okay? So, so at this time, is there any addition from the staff? I think, Dave, you've already kind of discussed it. Any additional from the staff that you'd like to discuss or input? Okay. So if there's no discussion from the members of the commission, is it a good time to open it up for the public? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to open this zone change to public hearing.
So moved.
This time, I would like to open the public hearing. At this time, if you'd like to come up and address the commission on your, provide your input, please state your name for the record and tell us how you feel. They're trying to decide who's going first.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Travis Shepard.
Like this?
I think she chickened out. Yeah, it's what we've got, we've got a buyer that wants to put storage units in there, obviously. The seller wants to sell it to him, and that's where we're at.
And what is your position on it? You're the...
I'm the real estate agent on the property. The existing storage units, he's full every mo, you can't find storage units in town. They're all full, mostly, and that's why he wants to expand. And so that's why we, whatever zone it is, we don't care, as long as we can just build storage units on it.
Okay.
So that's, that's where we're at.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Shepard?
So this is the same, the buyer is the same owner as the others?
Same owner.
The pattern would be the same?
Correct. His family's here, his wife's having a baby, so he couldn't show up. He was coming, but that change matters.
Understandable.
So, so, anyway.
Thank you. Do we have to, we have to, like, who's next? Hello, sir.
Hello, sir.
How are you?
Just fine. How are you?
Good.
Good. My name's Russell Birch.
Hello, Russell.
And my son-in-law is the developer, and yes, we own the, it's a family, you know, we're family. His dad lives in town, so, you know, we're, I don't, but they do, and so we're just here. We just want to serve the public, really. We are exhibiting some, we don't have the proper things for the proper people, you know? If you want a proper size, we have to say, "Well, you can have this," you know? And that's just, we're just trying to serve the people of Spanish Fork, you know, just trying to be good vendors, you know? It's real simple, you know? And yes, we're here already. We, we will keep the, at the minimum, we feel this is a minimum. We'll, we'll try to dress it up as much as possible when we, when we put the new facility in. We like clean, well-kept, well-maintained, well-managed facilities, and that's our commitment. That's our, that's our corporate commitment, that's our commitment to the city and to those residents of the city that we like to serve. It's really...
Are the units a little different style than some of the others? I mean, aren't those larger?
We have some large, yes. We have a few large, yes, and they're, they're high demand. There's certainly high demand, those larger units, yes. From a business point of view, they're, they're not the most profitable, but so, you like this, so, but we don't have anything really for the, for the public to have a choice. They're really coming in to us and having what's left. And so, you know, as a businessman, if you're, if you're, if you think about business as what we're doing here, we want to provide them a choice. And so this is, we're just really trying to be good business people. It's really simple, so... Any other questions for me? Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the audience like to address the commission? No?
I don't know.
I thought he, I thought he called you out and called you a chicken. I thought you'd have to show him up. I thought you'd have to call, I thought you'd have to show him up and say, "I'm not a chicken."
Maybe you had an onsite manager that split, so, I mean, they're well taken care of. If you drive down the road, you see how nice they look.
All right, good, good. Good. All right, well, we value everybody's opinion, so if you, if everybody'd like to come up. Hello?
Hi. Derek Rentsch, I'm from Provo.
Hi, Derek.
And I am the developer's brother, and I do all the maintenance, and I also work with Officer Doug Howell sometimes on security issues. We've installed quite a few cameras to make things better. When Mr. Birch purchased the property, it was having a difficult time with security, and they came right in and just fixed that up, and they created more of a presence onsite, and they also have shored up all of the units, making sure that they're completely maintained on a weekly basis by me. We do, do quite a bit of maintenance there, all the way down to painting the bollards so they never look beat up, because once you get a beat-up unit, it just doesn't work. But I can vouch for the fact that they do care, and they do want to put their money where their mouth is. They want to make it look presentable always because they know that brings the best people. Also, I'm there often, one person moves out, the next moves in. There's never an opening. They have a waiting list because the prices are reasonable and because people feel safe there. They feel like things are going well. And I'm always available because I'm so close. So sometimes I'll get calls 12:00, 12:00 AM, 1:00 AM, and be right down and help with things, so... It's a good place, and, and they'll make that other property, if they're allowed, they'll make it just as good.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
So is there anybody else that would like to address the commission? Travis is a snicker.
I'm going to go beat him up and get outside.
We'll have to watch that one. All right, so at this time, I'd like to go ahead and close public hearing. And do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second on that, so we'll go ahead and proceed with discussion on the zone change. I'll just kind of start it off as, I don't have anything against storage units or the way they're maintained and looked. We have, as part of our jobs as commissioners and planners, is to look at our city's future. And we do know that UDOT has now have on their, I don't want to say agenda, but they have on their, I don't know, maybe agenda is the right word, five, 10 years down the road, and sometimes even three, to put an on and off ramp on 2700 North. The minute they put an on-ramp there, Travis, you made a comment a minute ago that nobody's been knocking on the door to buy that property. Now, all of a sudden, $10 property becomes $1,000 property. Has it, I mean, I don't know if that's a fair equation, but it's going to, the value of it and the desire for it will increase. Just as a way of thought, and across the street over here, we have a big old hospital going in, so, and we have this big corridor going down to City Creek. So we do have to look at what do we visualize this area to be as part of our city. 2700 North has, for many, many, many years, like Travis said, been no desire. It's been water property, when Smith Ford put that out there 25 years ago, everyone's like, "What are they doing?" When they put that on, I'm now, everyone's going to be like, "Now who's laughing?" Not that they were laughing before, but, yeah, it was a surprise that they relocated out there where they did. So we have to ask ourselves as planners and cities, when people get off this interstate, what do we want this area to look like? Do we want it to look like an industrial area, or do we want to bring potentially retail now? If you were to span up a little bit more to the Springville exit, we have to kind of think about what they did here when Walmart built here and this intersection came in. This was the same concept. Nobody wanted to build out here either. Soon as this came in, and Walmart came in, all of a sudden, boom, it starts developing around it, and we visualize this same concept at 2700 North.
Other than, they've already got existing batch plant, sewer plant, fabricating shop, you've already got a lot of the existing stuff, which you don't have up in the Springville block.
I agree. I mean, those are good points. I just...
I don't know what retail's can build right there across from that, in that area. I think possibly up above Smith, yes, but back where our piece of property is, I don't, I don't see that happening.
Okay. Do you visualize even with the frontage here on the freeway, that even maybe another car dealer would come in there?
I don't know.
On High Acres, that would be pretty tough.
Well, you've got this, the batch plant, where you've got cement trucks riding down that road all day long, and you have dust and everything else, so I, I don't see it personally. I think if you get closer to the, where the offerant could be someday, it's possibly there. Most people, they're getting off there, most of them are going to go straight to Main Street, you know, rather, you know, rather than going down to 200 East. Because you have nothing down there. I mean, you got...
So right in this area here, you know, the elevation of the freeway kind of doesn't really show a lot of this unless you're on the far lane looking down off the hill, but right here, it's almost... But right here, it's almost, it becomes flat with the interstate again, doesn't it?
About a third of that.
About a third of that? Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, I mean, it's not, this is not the Brad Show, I'm just, I mean, the commission needs to discuss up here what you want and what you visualize. And if we're not ready to make action on it, we can continue it, or we can, you know, until we have enough time to think about it. But, you know, I really, we just have to visualize, what do we see this? And when you add this to there, yes, there's already a lot there.
Where, so currently, storage sheds, storage type buildings can be placed in I-2, correct? Where is the closest I-2? Or, I can't identify that I-2, is that it? Is that it?
Let me see if I can pick a crazy color here.
And then like where else in the city is an I-2?
Um, not very many vacant properties are in I-2.
This is gonna look kind of like.
Some property on.
Pick a different color, I'm sorry.
There's some arrowhead trails. I believe the Sugarbee Factory's on I-2. And some property around the mountain, so. I certainly think it.
So that purple color is.
Purple is the I-2, at least down in that area.
So if we move down through town.
Yeah, some properties down.
Down by some residential, this is IFA. This corner.
Is there storage units on any of those I-2 properties currently? So we got other storage buildings in the city, down by Healy Plumbing, for example, what's that currently?
They were probably built on the old I-1 before we changed it, though.
Would that be now I-1?
Is that a fair statement, that they were built before it was modified or changed? So they were, they were all built in the old I-1, and then we changed it?
In fact, I think this, I have to say it was certain, this was the last town, I'm sorry.
So then going back to, I think it was Russell, sorry if I misspoke, going back to Russell saying is that the city is in needs of them, in needs, that sounded good, huh? In need of them, but we don't have any zones that are allowing for that growth. And if we were, which is the other can of worms, I said, don't, John's back and forth, and I'm doing it myself. But if we go change the other one, then we open the can of worms, and they can go anywhere and everywhere almost, because there's a lot of I-1s. There it is.
Can you scroll out, so we can get a bigger picture?
My two cents is this. I think the, the given, you know, I'm looking at the DRC recommendation, which that the industrial use field carried to the north to create a straight line with the existing industrial use. So basically, there was industrial use right there. And so the DRC says, we're, we're okay with it moving up that far. That the I-1 zone be allowed to include storage units. And that the property stay I-1 to allow for that use, which would require the Title 15 amendment, right? That we don't have, that we're not really, we're not acting on tonight. So that was, that was, that's kind of the DRC part of it. I, I think if you go that direction, I'm comfortable with that. But what I'm not comfortable with is where then the I-1 zones are currently located. And going back to your comment, Dave, about the jealousy comment. And so, you know, right now, is there, you know, an area here that, that we need to consider and say, no, this shouldn't be I-2, I-1, an industrial zone at all? But that, you know, we're okay with that becoming our boundary between an industrial zone and a non-industrial zone, whatever that may be. And then, of course, the other area, and this is maybe my pet project here, but is this area here, is, to me, that's, that's where we talk, we've talked about as a planning commission, the idea of a, a office, professional office zone. And that, 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 we need to protect that for that type of a use, because I feel like that's more in line with the, with the vision for that area, where I see that area going, so.
I even asked Dave to look into, the staff looking with legal, to see if there's even a zone that we could add that's, that's kind of a protected zone. And you know, if we have concept of something coming in, until we do our due diligence, that gives us time to research and study, that we put a, that we, you know, put something, that zones it as protective, until we have further study taking place.
I know Provo City's done that with the area surrounding the frontrunner station, they call it an interim zone.
Just something that, yeah, just something like, I don't know what you want to label it, but I think that whenever we have things that we see coming in the future, that we need to label it as something that allows us time to research and plan before decisions are made. And I think that we need to really look at that in the future, that's a whole nother subject like you're, but I think that even if we make this decision tonight, we need to look at a little bit in that square area. Because, I mean, whether it's mixed use with retail and light industrial, or whatever we're labeling it, we need to make sure that it's labeled correctly. Can we zoom back in? I want to look at, what does it look like from the top of the proposal, straight across? Because I think straight across, there's already the, the sewer plant in that, over there, right?
If you go straight across, if, yeah, if you go straight across, that's.
Sewer plant's down here.
Yes, it's worth the bidding, so that's all, if we went straight across, then all these are the same.
So if you go straight across, all the way over to, all the way over to Main Street, and then, and then rezoned it above that, retail or for future development?
DRC was recommending putting that commercial and going, putting that line straight across there.
Straight across here.
Correct, that's what DRC recommended last week. And also, just to let you know, in these existing storage units, about 58% are, are tenants are from Spanish Ford. So they've got a lot of other people commuting in through Spanish Ford, you know, to use them, so. You know, they, they are bringing in some, because I'm sure they're buying stuff here while they're, you know, feeling up or whatever.
Jared, I was gonna say, here, to that property line. So that would be the commercial.
And then what would this, this be, as far as that proposal?
I-1, no. The DRC is not comfortable with expanding I-2 in this area. And so they wanted to keep this property zoned I-1, it looks like, based on what I'm reading. And they even suggested, if the property or was comfortable with it, putting that back to being I-1 and leaving just that as the I-2, where the stake or parson is. Am I reading that correctly?
Does Smith Ford property come butt up against the proposal here?
No, the storage is butt up against the proposal.
To the north, though.
So who owns this little piece right here?
Smith Auto.
Okay. So that, they do own this, they just haven't, they haven't developed on it, then? And I guess they own up to this line here, probably?
No, they own that corner, part of it, no, that's not owned by DNC.
Is that David Freeman, this or?
Right there, that's, that's Smith Auto's.
That's Smith Auto.
Yep. The next piece there is Dave and, Dave Clower and Cliff Hills across the streets of where it's, that owns all that, those two, those two pieces. There's actually three pieces there.
So, Mr. Anderson, let me ask about process at this point. Because I guess where I'm, where I would lean and, and I'm trying to negotiate a motion in my own mind, is that we would not approve the I-2 zone change tonight. But that would push the need to have the Title 15 change to allow the I-1 zone to have storage units. But I believe that we need to look at a general plan element for this area here, and I don't know how far north or whatever. Where does, how do we do that? I'm not sure we've ever, I've seen that done, at least initiated from the, the city side, because we haven't. We keep talking about a general plan review, and we're kind of chinking away at it, but not as fast as we ought to, probably.
Well, what I'm hearing you describe, though, is what I think you talked about in your work meeting just a few weeks ago, which is a general plan review for areas surrounding 2700 North and I-15. And deciding what changes maybe we should make to the general plan, that would then correspond to future zoning, to do things that we've talked about tonight and before. I, I feel like that's the direction that we're moving in now, just based on what you told me, again, just a couple of weeks ago. So, that discussion, I would hope, will culminate in scheduling a public hearing. And we have an actual proposal ready for the public to review and, and discuss. And you guys making a recommendation, and that the city council would consider, and they'll do whatever they want with it. And again, I think that's, that's underway. As for the text amendment, if you have any specific language that you want us to consider, we, we can go to work on that right now, if you're comfortable just simply with what the DRC recommended, which is to just simply add storage units as a permitted use in the I-1 zone. I think unless you give us any other direction, that's likely what we'll do. And we'll schedule a public hearing for your meeting next month for that. Unless something happens with the map amendment in the meantime. And yes, the only thing I'll, I'll add to that, I've had no fewer than 20 different people ask me where they can build storage units in the last year. I know there is a lot of demand for land that people can build storage units on. So I think that's a bigger discussion that we need to have, just relative to where should it be allowed? And maybe that's just part of a discussion about changing the text to allow them in the I-1 zone. Personally, I think we need to be a little bit more restrictive than just to open up as much vacant land as we have now available in the I-1 zone, some of which is pretty hard to replicate with some of the frontage and access and visibility that we have. So, yeah, I think that's something that certainly should be thought through before we, we do anything hastily.
I mean, if you make it, going back to the conditional use question I had, if you make it a conditional use, saying that it can't be located within 50 feet, I, I can, I don't know if you can do those kinds of things.
That's not a conditional use, but that's a geographical stipulation that we could write into the zoning code. And maybe you don't allow them within 300 feet of Main Street, or something like that, so you have kind of that first.
Yeah, I mean, just 200 East, I don't know that I have any issues with there being storage units. But like you said, Main Street becomes another, whole nother ball of wax, so.
Right. And that would just be something even that would be reflected on the map geographically, by way of where certain things are and are not permitted, versus being a conditional use, which again, when it's listed as a conditional use, at least in the traditional way that we would likely list it, then we will allow it. It's just a matter of how it looks and feels and things like that.
I'm just sitting here scratching my head, because it's one of those things that if we change the Title 15, which we're not voting on tonight, then we don't need a zone change. If we don't do it, then we need the zone change, and it's kind of like, put one before the other, and then it's just.
It just delays them a month, basically, right? I mean, if we, if we say that we recommend that the zone change not occur with the DRC recommendation, that they go forward with a text amendment, that puts us on a, puts that on our agenda next month.
And then I asked the question is, you know, you know, I like the idea of moving it commercial north of the property. Do we not adjust the zone change? And do we not allow storage units in I-1, but yet, if we feel it's right, do we, do we propose a conditional use? Because if we allow storage units in I-1, they can go wherever they want that's in that zone. If we change it, if we change it to Zone 2, or I-2, then there are issues. So if we feel that's the right spot, I'm kind of leaning that we don't do any of this, that we propose a conditional use for it. That we don't, we don't expand I-2.
What do you see as the reason for the conditional use? Curious your, your perspective.
Just to allow this, but not allow it to go in all the other I-2, I-1s.
I think the only way to do that is to make it an I-2 zone and not make the change to the I-1. Because it sounds like, from what Dave says, is that if we, that a conditional use can't limit the location of it, it only limits how it looks, and. Am I saying that right?
But can't you approve it for a particular project?
Yeah, let's take equipment to talk about that. That's, that's a really common misunderstanding, is that when something's listed as a conditional use, we can be selective about where we approve it or not. That's the misunderstanding part, we cannot do that. When it's listed as a conditional use, that phraseology is intended simply to describe that a city can impose conditions. And again, the conditions are intended to mitigate foreseeable detrimental impacts that somehow eventually occur on surrounding properties in the surrounding neighborhood. You can impose conditions, but you can't say no to it.
It can be pretty broad, can't they, those conditions?
And you end up seeing people argue about that all the time. That's why we don't have very many conditional uses in our, our zoning code any longer.
It seems like we ought to just have a, like a quick, if the group wants to go one way or the other, then you can kind of cut the debate and go that way and.
Well, I just wondered, what's the opposition to expanding it to I-2? I mean, what's, just because of heavier industry that might go in? I'm just trying to figure out why that's not a good possibility.
What's the negative side effect, besides?
I think what Tracy just said is the concern that was talked about lots of people here. Worry about changing the zoning and having something more obnoxious than starting today.
Science is what the storage units say, you know, that's not the plan to put anything else, that's.
True, but if it's zoned, they could tear the storage units down and build a high-rise there.
You could sell it.
The existing ones are I-2 right now, they've zoned this I-2, we'll let you take all the bulk back of I-1. I talked to him last night. And then that was telling the city out, or they can't have somebody else knock those storage units out, make that existing ones.
We're not against that. You know, if you want to change it at a later time, if we have the permission for good time. If you want to change it bad, that's fine with us.
I, I personally think commissioners, that it's less risky, in my opinion, to change it to Zone 2 and allow that to be built, than to open up the can of worms for the whole I-1. In my opinion.
Do we have to make a decision on this tonight?
No, I'll do anything.
We would hope so, because we are on the city council, you know, scheduled for this.
If we don't make a recommendation, then what happens? If we don't do anything, what happens?
You can continue for further discussion, or we can send it to the city council without a, without a decision.
Now, if, if we deny the expansion to I-2, to go further north, you can still come back and we can negotiate, we can, we can still negotiate the text change for I-1. To, to allow it, correct?
Sure.
But if you deny it, it will go to city council, correct?
I don't think so, will it? Oh, I guess.
If we make a recommendation to not, to not, not make the change, that recommendation will go to city council, and then they make the final decision.
Or if we table it, it won't go to city council.
That's right.
And we'd rather not, we'd rather it sit here, just because we, we were tabled last time on DRC, so I mean, so it's not gonna be the first time we've been tabled, because we might have to get the project going, if it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Well, is there anyone that has a problem with seeing the storage units built on that site?
I, I, I do, for what I envision, full interchange, I do. I mean, yes, there's a cement plant there, but boy, I sure hope that thing's not gonna be there very long. I hope someday it's gonna be gone, so I hate to jeopardize what could happen with typical interchanges.
How long is the sewer plant gonna be there?
Forever. Forever.
As long as there's sewer, is that what you're saying?
Well.
It's not like the property can, the property can't be reused for anything else.
Well.
It's hazardous at this time.
I don't know who would want to come in and build there commercially to attract a lot of people with the sewer plant right there. I just, I just don't see anything that you can put there that would, the only, the only drawback I have is maybe what you see from the highway. But if you ask the citizens of the community what they would want, and, and had a vote on it, it'd depend on how many people want storage units. And if you're having a hard time finding storage units, I mean, to me, that's a, not a bad location to put storage units. You've already got them there, you've got the batch. You've already got them there. You've got the batch plant, you've got the sewer plant. And I don't see a large.
Sewer plant, it's put it down here.
It is down there, but there's a stench that's created. And who, who wants to have a, a restaurant right over there across from the sewer plant?
You're going to offend Jared now.
So personally, I don't have a problem with seeing the storage units built there myself. Any further north than, than I think that we wa, would want to take a look at that, especially right around the intersection itself that is, would possibly be put in there. But, but for me, I mean.
So is your visualized, would you liking it? Are you, are you more comfortable with changing the zoning, allowing it in I-2? Or, or re, or changing I-1 to allow it?
Well, that was my question is i, if there is a little opposition. So, so, you know, that's something that would have to either overcome or, or vote on. But there are implications on which way you go there evidently. I hate to open up an I-1 for storage units and have it available every place if we don't want that. I, I like the idea of increasing that area. It's already I-2, just large enough to include the storage units. And I don't know if legally there's a way that you can make the, make that new zoning contingent on those storage units being built.
That, that gets to be a little bit difficult, but.
Yeah, that's what I would think, but.
I, I think that's a pretty minimal risk.
Well, that's what I would think too, yeah.
What's a minimal risk, sorry, I'm sorry.
That they wouldn't be built if we.
And the zoning is going to be changed to I-2 and the storage units are going to be built there.
So just, just looking at this and what the DRC recommended, that, I mean, their main thing is to go ahead and change the I-1 to allow the storage units. Now, I can't think of what I was going to ask. Like, how's that going to be? I don't know. If we were to allow the I-1 to allow storage units, how quickly are we all of a sudden going to have a demand for storage units in that area before we could consider other rezoning and commercial and re, you know? What we're talking about is changing north of that to commercial. I'm just wondering how quickly are things going to unfold that the city would then be running to catch up instead of being proactive? Does that make sense?
We could wonder that. Yes is as good as mine, I'm sure.
I'm not opposed to the storage units there. It's more an issue of the west way, the best way to do it that doesn't affect the area, the way we want it to develop.
I-2, they would let it go back to I-1 after we got the storage units in both, both portions.
Controls your competition.
What's that?
Said controls your competition.
Well, I mean, it will help the city where they can't, or knock them down, put any, heavy, another batch, fix back.
Still wouldn't be able to, we still, we still wouldn't be able to change it back though if it's not allowed. So we'd still.
You can change it back, it would just be a non-conforming use.
Oh, it'd just be non-conforming.
You have existing storage units or in I-1, correct? The other ones, not these, but the other ones throughout the town.
Right.
I have a question for you. I don't remember your name, sir, the secu, the maintenance? Derek? Can you come up to the, for? Being that you're the maintenance and security, at times, secure, or, um, storage units have been used for non-storage facilities.
Like living?
Not necessarily living, but I've seen people do an automot, automotive out of their storage units, painting out of their storage units. I mean, so do you have processes in place to prevent that? Or do your, does your company allow that?
It, it does not allow it. It occasionally someone will drive their own car in there and work on it. But usually that happens in the larger units. But mostly what we have in there right now is just storage of RVs, the old batting cages that were over here, they're in one. And when we do have, have that, we had some guys try and use it for a wood shop. But they only have 20 amp breakers. And they started popping them and we asked them why they were doing that, why, why they're popping the breakers. And they just said, oh, well, we have a fan going down there because sometimes we come in and do some things. And so we went down and we said, oh, can't work here. And so there is a policy against it.
Your policy does state that it has to be for storage only.
Storage only and not for business at all. And we don't put any kind of power in there that they could. There's one light in the middle, one socket on the side and a light switch, that's it. And so it's very bare bones. We, we, when we moved in there, when, when they purchased it, there was, there were two units and they had full banks of sockets in there. And they had 50 amp breakers for each one. But Jay, my brother, came in and ripped both of those out because that's not what he wants for it. It, it, it becomes a problem. Those people live there often and you get people coming in with gate codes to do business. And that just doesn't work for the security of the building.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, I, I, you know, I think we've discussed this enough. I don't know, I feel free to discuss it more. I'm not trying to cut anybody off. But I really think we have three options. We can accept the zone change and allow those to be built and, and then discuss the commercial use at a, at a different time. Or we have a working group and, and look at general zone changes. We can not accept it and send it to the city council. Or we continue it until we have better time to think about it and look at the Title 15. And if we want to open up the storage units to be in I-1, I think you can read the minutes. I think there's a mix from all the city officials about what to do. I, I don't think that I've seen something come across that has, I mean, it's, it goes back and forth between all of the DRC and staff. I think everybody had some different opinions. I think similar to a lot of our difference of opinions up here tonight too. I don't know that there's a negative with it being Zone 2 other than the potential risks down the road. I think pretty confidently speaking tonight that, um, that storage unit is the plan and it's not a hidden agenda for something else down the road. So really, I think we need to decide if, if we're going to move it to Zone 2, if we're going to table it. And with the concept of accepting storage units in I, I-1. So I think there's risks to both. If we are, as a group, leaning towards allowing it and, and you don't have a problem with it, then we just need to decide if it's titled, if it's, if it's 2 or 1. It really, that's what it comes down to. So I would entertain a motion if somebody's willing to make a motion. If there's more questions, let's make more questions. But I think we've talked about it quite a while.
I would make a motion, and I don't know how this would work exactly, but my motion, could we pass this on to the city council with the motion that we're in favor of, of bill, allowing the storage units to be built with either a zone change in order to allow that to happen to I-2 or to modify I-1? So it would allow storage units to be built there? And, and I don't know, when I say that, what implications that's going to have for the city with all the other I-1s.
So.
You know, if, are they, if you looked at all the other I-1s locations, would, would it be acceptable from a city's standpoint to build storage units in those other locations? If, if I-1 was changed to allow storage units? Or do you know that?
I-1 could be changed in the future, but it's not on our agenda tonight, so.
But I think you brought up two questions that are very appropriate for the planning commission to weigh in on. First of all, you've got this proposal that's before you. They filed the application, they've done everything, everything they need to do to get an answer on it. And like we talked about, you don't need to take action tonight, but you certainly can. So the question is, is this appropriate for storage units? I, I-2 zoning is obviously the, the change that needs to occur to make that happen. I think really though ultimately, we're just talking about storage units on that property and whether you collectively feel comfortable with that. The other questions that has kind of come up, I think out of the DRC discussion is, where else maybe should storage units be allowed in the city? Should it be permitted throughout the I-1 zone or not? And likewise, I think that's something also appropriate for you to weigh in on. I think there's less need to maybe worry about that tonight or in your next meeting, given the fact that we don't have a formal application necessarily that is driving that like this question on the, the I-2 zoning. But that's, I guess, how I see really what ultimately is appropriate for you to, to act on tonight. If you wanted to, to make a motion like what you described, Brad, which is kind of a twofold, or just maybe leave it up to the city council.
Well, it's, it's passing the buck a little bit, but I don't know how else to do it.
And I guess my thought on that simply is that I think you are the appropriate body. When we're talking about the bigger discussion is to, to where this particular use should go in the city. I would hope that you would be deliberate about that and put some thought into that and make a recommendation. I think there are lots and lots of different ways to pursue that and to address it. And I think that can be separated from this question on the I-2 zoning that's before you now. And a lot of other ways to deal with it as well, but there's just a couple of different ways that I see it.
Was, let me ask a question. Was that, this property ever I-2? From what I understood, it used to be and they took it back to I-1. So that's why I'm saying, why could they not put it in I-2 and then change both of them back to I-1? Because from what I understand, that was I-2 before.
I don't know that answer.
Do you know that, Dave?
I don't think it was. I think the I-2 came about.
For us when we talked to you in May.
I think the I-2 came about because of Saker Parsons. I know we changed it to I-2 before them. At least I'm pretty certain that we did. But I, I, quite possibly 20 years ago when that land was originally annexed, or 30 or 40, it might have been so differently then, but I don't, I don't.
So we have a motion?
Yeah, the property owner was willing to let it go back.
Well, he's got to restate that. It's more of a question than a motion.
Honestly, I don't know if that gives you any question, what are you thinking?
Well, your, your motion, was it, was it complete or is it, was that more of a question of can we make that kind of a motion?
I was wondering if we could make that as a motion.
I don't think we can because it's two different things. You can make a, a motion on one, a recommendation on another, but I don't think you could combine the two in one motion.
I think we have to make a motion about whether or not it's going to be I-2 or not. That's, that's the motion.
That's, that's what's on, that's what's on the agenda.
Yeah, you're right.
And once that decision's made.
And that's the only way that they can be built if it's, if we make the motion that this be, this only changed I-2.
Well, I don't say it's the only way, but yeah, it's.
From our perspective right now, today.
Because if we deny it, it still goes to city council and they can make a decision.
Well, I'd make that motion that we change the zone to I-2 to accommodate the building of the storage units.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wilson. Do we have a second?
I'm on the fence in some respects, but I'm going to, I'm going to second the motion.
Okay. And we have a second by Commissioner Fallon. And we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote and we'll allow Commissioner Nelson to stay out of this one.
Yeah, there you go.
For conflict, okay? So we'll go ahead and start over here with Commissioner Tanner.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
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 And we'll go ahead and move on. Thank you, folks.
Yep.
All right, we will go ahead and move on to the next item on our business, which is the zone change proposal for Eagle Crest. Eagle Crest is a community plot proposal that is on a 21 acres that's up on 1400 East. And we'll go ahead and turn the time over to staff, Mr. Anderson to address this.
Okay, two different parts to this. First of all, a public hearing tied to the proposed zone change to change the subject property there from rural residential to R-19. Then a proposed preliminary plat. And do you have any questions about the proposed zone change? Let me just maybe ask that. It's pretty simple.
It's basically matching the yellow, right?
Yeah, I can't imagine honestly that we'd want it zoned any other way. So I think that's a pretty easy one. So maybe I'll talk about the plat for a minute, if that's okay.
I don't think there's any questions, so just for formality, let's just go ahead and open a public hearing and put this one, so. So with that said, I'd like to this time open a public hearing, make a motion to open a public hearing for Eagle Crest. And have a second. At this time, if there's anybody that would like to address the commission for Eagle Crest, go ahead and come forward. Let the record know that there is nobody to come forward to address the commission. At this time, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
And have a second. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to change the zone for Eagle Crest as proposed.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the zone change on the 21 acre parcel from rural residential to R-19.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fallon, a second by Commissioner Nelson. And we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote starting.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
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 Next time on our agenda will be to review the preliminary plat for Eagle Crest. And at this time, I'll invite Commissioner, or not Commissioner, Mr. Anderson up to address this for the plat.
Okay. Try to just make this as simple as possible. And if Jared or anybody else wants to throw a different opinion out there, they certainly can. You have three different proposed layouts for the preliminary plat. If you go to the last page.
Which is Concept 5. It is labeled as 4, but it's really 5. If you notice that the last page and the second to last page both say Concept 4 on it.
I haven't taken much time to go through this, just check simple things, but fairly confident that all of our requirements for lots in the R-19 zone are, are met with this layout. And simply put, uh, of the three layouts, based on what I think the rest of our staff would like to see happen and what I think's good for a situation like what we have here, where we need to have some space for storm drain detention. I think this is the best layout to accommodate the development potential that the property has. So the applicant gets the number of lots that they reasonably could expect here. And we get a situation where the property's in a location where it's somewhat usable. In this case, the city would maintain that. We'd try to make it usable away, maybe have, excuse me, perhaps having some park equipment there and things like that. And given what we try to accomplish on a road like 1400 East, we really try to limit the number of, of driveways from private homes that go out onto roads of that nature. But you can see the big difference between the first layout and this one relative to public streets accessing that. You know, kind of given those two options and just weighing the pros and cons of both, I can be persuaded that, that that third option can work just fine. And if I understood right, I think that's kind of how our engineering department feels is that that third option's better than having the public streets tie into 1400 East, five of them along this frontage. So rather than that, we'd have three streets. This is the five, so instead of that, you'd have three, but you would have six homes with driveways. Understand the driveways would be designed such that a homeowner wouldn't have to back out. They'd have some way to navigate on their properties they could pull in. They'd have some way to navigate on their properties they could pull in and then pull frontwards back out onto the lot. That doesn't always happen, we know, but um that would at least be possible. So that's a longer than I wanted to give you a recommendation to consider approving. This is the preliminary plat for uh Eagle Crest.
Thank you. So in summary, guys, if you want to look at the different concepts, just to reiterate what Mr. Anderson said, your main difference is the, really, the roads. How many roads do you want on, coming onto the fourteen hundred east? And then one of the things he didn't address, and Jared, I don't know if you want to discuss it a little bit more, but it's the uh, the water. So if you have questions, but the water retention or the basins that you're asking, you're saying that from a water perspective, that concept five is a better water? Do you want to address that?
I've got a pointer. We feel it's a better location to have our stormwater detention basin here next to fourteen hundred east. It is collecting the water off fourteen hundred east from a subdivision in this location and then in the future subdivision here. Uh, the other concept had it deeper into the subdivision, surrounded by lots. Uh, it's it's easier, it, this would be harder to get water in and water back out of. Uh, this, the other concept, we can bring it in on one end and take it out on the other. So it's a better design for stormwater.
And maybe one more comment from the stormwater. The original application had the pond out here on fourteen hundred east. And from looking at, from a stormwater, that works as well. But as these properties get built and fenced in, we have this property out on fourteen hundred east that could be used for kids to play in, grass, things like that. However, when it's fenced off and out on fourteen hundred east, it's not used as well. We've got basins like that in town that aren't used because they're not as accessible. So these options we're looking at, still trying to keep it close to fourteen hundred east, however, bringing it into the subdivision so that maybe some kids would play and, you know, throw a football or try to give a dual purpose to these basins that typically we don't see a bunch of water and it's in rare basement.
And the other question I would have in relation to this um preliminary plat is a lot of times we see things in phases. Is there no phase in this?
There's two.
Phase one being the north.
Okay. I'm seeing it now, thank you. So I guess I just asked, is the the phasing, looks like phase one, only has the one road going in and out or no, it'll still have over here, huh?
As well as here.
Okay, so we're good there?
Where do, do these houses come right onto the fourteen hundred east?
Sixty.
Six.
As well as these here.
These three and these three.
So there's a total of six homes that were back there.
So that's perhaps the downside of this, like options.
This one's in between where you're free.
See, I.
This version has zero, but that pond is kind of out there now.
See, and I see it actually as an upside. I I run on this road quite a bit and and this area over here is there, you know, the backs are turned to the street. At the further south, you go on fourteen hundred east, the houses face the the properties there and and it's a much nicer thing to walk on or um, people from my neighborhood walk to church down there, so you know, it's a much more comfortable thing. Um, along this subdivision right here, the back of house is not maintained very well. And so I think all of those options, to me, override the concern about having six pieces of, uh, six houses that face uh
That layout.
Fourteen hundred east, right.
It's entirely just a traffic conflict.
Absolutely. Yeah, I know, I understand that. So you gotta weigh both, you know, weigh it all, and I think to, from my perspective, it.
Now, this is concept three right here, right?
This is the original, yeah.
Same number of lots, everything.
Brian might speak towards them. I think applicants represented their.
Brian, do you guys have a preference of which plat?
Well, uh, may I just go here? Brian Gable with L E I, um, the engineer on the project. Brian Prince is with Ivory Homes, was planning to be here, but had a um, kind of a emergency come up, uh, that he had to attend, so he asked me to come. And from Ivory's standpoint, they like concept five. The, the, you know, the other one was um, was, uh, you know, based on the current um roads master plan and where we just, we avoided fronting on fourteen hundred east. I think staff brought up a lot of good points about, um, you know, trying to make that space usable. And Ivory's been very willing and anxious to to accommodate kind of the suggestions that they brought in. And that, that's what led to concepts, uh, well, there's two and three that you never even saw because they they evolved. But, you know, four and five is where staff ultimately kind of recommended. Um, Ivory uh does like five uh as well, the best, uh, but like they're, they're more than happy to do any of these. Um, but they do, they do like this idea. Um, uh, another thing that um, that Dave didn't mention, probably rightfully so, is um, the staff didn't require um park improvements. Like, we, you see, we show kind of a little playground on on there and stuff, just because it's not a master plan development, the city technically can't require it. Um, but Brian Prince did tell me, you can let them know that that we, we plan to put, um, you know, a, a little playground, probably a, a little concrete pad with picnic tables, couple of benches for people to come out, watch their kids play. Um, so if they, if they're gonna improve it like that, then then they're gonna go ahead and make another amenity, even though it's not necessarily a requirement of a standard subdivision.
Isn't there an elementary school right here?
Canyon Elementary.
Yeah, canyon's just south of this, yeah.
Are we voting on one of these?
Yeah.
Is that what we're doing?
And I think our recommendation is the fifth one. Talking about the I.
We're supposed to vote on this?
Well, we'd like you to make a recommendation to approve more of them, so whichever one you prefer, yes.
The last few is out there.
There's no text here about what the D R C says on this particular.
We have not, yeah. No, we just talked about that today, so.
Okay.
So these two survive.
So if there's no text on it, the spirit of the D R C is what?
So the D R C's recommendation is to approve the fifth one.
We said.
We talked about a couple of them. My recommendation's five.
My recommendation's.
Has it, was there any discussion, you know, I don't know that that this has, you know, any plans im- immediate, but are there any, you know, having these alignments, has that been considered or looked at? I mean.
It'll, it'll dictate to some extent what happens on the other side.
It was considered, though, that Chris Thompson, the city junior, um, had us actually move eleven hundred south a little bit, because we had it further south. Uh, and he wanted, you can see it shifts there, um, and you go from one concept to the other. And and part of that shift was wanting, he wanted to make sure as as a road came into the future subdivision.
Might, it might tie in.
It allowed an appropriate depth of a lot to the south of that road.
Okay.
So so it hasn't, obviously, this wasn't planned, but it was thought of.
Right, okay.
May I make a motion?
Great, I was hoping somebody would.
I'd like to merge the motion with the group of, uh, concept five.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tanner. A second by Commissioner Tag. Let's do a roll call vote. Mr. Wilkinson?
Aye.
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 And that is all that is on our agenda for tonight. And at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to, oh, you know what? One more thing, just want to recap what the deci- decision was last night on the housing.
Townhomes?
You don't want to talk about that, do you?
I don't want to talk about it.
It's two and a half hours last night.
I was looking through the.
It felt like five hours.
They approved it, okay, there you go.
Talking about the townhome project?
Yeah, so that was the only thing that had come from your previous meeting.
And what was the vote? Was it a unanimous vote or?
There were only three council members here, so it had to be.
Okay.
Okay, so I will make a mo- or may, entertain a motion to close this meeting.
So moved.
Closed. All right, so at this time, the meeting is closed. We do, would invite the commissioners to uh tag along on a little road show. We want to go look at a couple of properties.
You get some time? Nope.
Okay, good.